But hey, that's why I told you we will experience technical difficulties and we're doing that, and so it's fine. Whereas individuals can take steps to reduce their risk of developing skin cancer by being sun aware. Sun protection helps prevent the harmful effects of UV exposure, including sunburn, skin cancer, premature skin aging, and eye damage. Now therefore, I, Wilma J. Collins, Mayor of the City of Helena, Montana, do hereby proclaim the 28th day of May, 2021, as City of Helena Don't Friday in the City of Helena, Montana, and urge all citizens to take cognizant of this event and participate fitly in its observance. In witness whereof, I hereunto set the hand and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana, to be affixed this 17th day of May, 2021. Wilma J. Collins, Mayor, Clerk of the Commission, Dana Clayborne. Is Ms. Fairbrothers on?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
Yes, you have a few words.
Sure, very few, because I know you're very busy, and I so appreciate this proclamation, Mayor Collins and the City Commission. In two days, it would be my husband's birthday. He died at age 45 from melanoma. And my hope is that our community members will be inspired and reminded by this proclamation that skin cancer is preventable, sun-safe behavior saves lives, and early detection saves lives. We all need to remember to protect the skin we're in. Any mammal can get melanoma and skin cancer, which lots of people don't realize, but Montana does have more than the average state. So we have a problem. We have a lovely, wonderful outdoor lifestyle, but we haven't done enough to protect our skin. And so I call upon us to be models for our children. Some of us have done a lot of damage, and we are working on secondary prevention, so watching our skin, but we certainly can help our youth. So please protect our kids' eyes, and we're seeing an increase in melanoma of the eye. Wear a hat with a three-inch brim, or get your kids' hats with three-inch brim. Protect your eyes with sunglasses. Protect your lips with lip balm that has sunblock in it. I prefer the non-chemical sun blocks myself. Wear protective clothing and protect unprotected skin with some sunscreen. Don't use indoor tanning. That does not make your skin more unreceptive to damage. It actually damages the skin. And love the skin you're in. Be that role model. And again, thank you so much for talking about this. I want to mention one more thing for parents, teachers, or those of us who are just interested. If you go to the Don't Friday site, F-R-Y Day for the Friday Before Memorial, there is wonderful information, all free, wonderful games, things that you can do to make it easier, and then actually quite a lot of fun. OPI is using some of this for their schools and hospitals, et cetera, have this information too. But again, thank you, because I think every time we get a proclamation, maybe one person will not end up being like my husband and will think about saving their own skin. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Fairbrother. Consent agenda claims. And A, claims. B, resolution requesting a mail ballot election for the city's 2021 primary and general elections. C, appointment of Stephanie Reinhardt as Deputy City Clerk. D, consider a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing fund to Consistori Shrine Temple Association for a field study on North Jackson Street. E, consider a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing fund to Downing Architect for the construction of sidewalk amenities 734 North Last James Gulch. F, consider a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing fund to Sealy Building LLC for the construction of sidewalks and pathway amenities at 630 North Last James Gulch. At this time, is Stephanie Reinhardt available?
Yes, hello. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to formally introduce myself. My name is Stephanie Reinhardt, and I'm really looking forward to working with each of you as well as serving the community in my new role as Deputy Clerk of the City Commission. Danae's been a great teacher, and I thoroughly believe the city is lucky to have her. I also wanted to take a moment and thank Director Sharon Haugen for her guidance and the opportunity to work with her these last few years in the City Community Development Department. So with that, thank you, and really looking forward to it.
Thank you. At this time, I want us to take all these claims and agenda items together. So do we have any discussion from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Please, go ahead.
I just wanted to briefly say congratulations to Stephanie. I know the full Commission's really looking forward to working with you more, and thanks for your work for the city the last couple of years, too.
Any other comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to echo that, and apologies to Director Haugen.
Any other comments?
Just a question on D, E, and F in the, for whomever, Director Haugen or the manager. So in the TIF minutes, the placer was also included in there. Are they coming up for a different vote at some point?
Thank you, Commissioner Halliday. Yes, the placer is planning to come in. It is on our agenda in future titles in the next, I believe it's either the next or the following meeting. But I can confirm that and verify with an email to you if you would like.
No, I was just making certain, since there were four, and we had three of them. So thanks.
If no other comments from the Commission, public comments? Do we have any raised hands, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands, and I've received no written public comment at this time. There's no one in the room to speak on this matter.
At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, before you go, I believe I need to read out the claims before you adopt them.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. May I recommend you entertain a motion of consent to the expenditures for 42621 and 43021, which have been approved for claims in the amount of $149,945.50, as well as expenditures for May 3, 4, and 7 of 2021, which have been approved for claims in the amount of $117,469.87.
Any discussion from the Commission? Any comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to accept consent agenda items A through F.
Second?
Any final discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Mayor Collins, I would ask, there are some unidentified individuals in the attendees, and I know that Commissioner Loughlin was going to try and link up to this meeting remotely. So if she is in the attendees at this time, and I can't see her, I'd ask her to raise her hand.
Commissioner Loughlin, would you raise your hand for the vote, please? Would you, are you able to switch her to the?
It doesn't appear that she's in there, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to confirm that the unnamed individuals in the attendees were not her.
Okay.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Communications proposals from the Commission?
From you, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to look to the four of us, since Commissioner Loughlin's not here. So I had a concern brought to me last week by a member of one of our policing discussion, one of our policing discussion panels, that we weren't taking public comment during those meetings. And I just want to look down and confirm with the Commission that it would be our intent that we're going to do public comment at all of those, and if we're not, I'd want to confirm or discuss why.
Thank you, Commissioner. Comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Since you parted our commission.
I think that that's appropriate. I know that there was, it was not on the original agenda. It did come up during the discussion, and the facilitators did entertain public comment at a couple of points, and the group, public comment was appropriate. I don't know if Manager Harold Schalk has any other reflections, but that was the discussion during that first session.
And that's great. I wasn't looking for the specific one, but wanted to make sure that we're all in unanimity that we're going to be doing public comment, since I know how important that is to all of us.
Yes, I'm very supportive of that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other communications from the Commission? Madam Haloshaw?
Thank you, Mayor, Commission, and thank you for the question, Commissioner Halliday. Yes, there's been a conversation around whether or not these study groups are required since they are not making final decisions or decisions. They're in fact making recommendations as to whether or not public comment is required, one, too, but also whether or not that comment will result in a contemplation by the group for incorporation since they're making a recommendation. So just by way of that conversation, want to make sure to clarify that the working groups are being asked to verify in this one in particular, the SRO, the method in which they'll incorporate any comments, since they are making a recommendation to me as opposed to the Commission. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the Commission? Report of the City Attorney?
Mayor, Commissioners, nothing to report tonight.
Report of the City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Just wanted to point out some disappointing activity in our community over the weekend, and there were 10 personal vehicles, the cathedral, two businesses, and vandalism as well at Mount Helena and Bay Street Trailheads. Those impacts in our community not only obviously have a fiscal impact, but they actually diminish the hope so many citizens have had in returning to what is now a transition and returning to what may be living with COVID. And I would just urge those in the community who are responsible to please seek out positive ways that they may influence the community and the outcomes and the work that we're all doing together, as it does affect all of our work in our neighborhoods, and we all want to be proud of something that we're working on together. Thank you, Mayor. No other comments at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Haloshaw. Communications from Helena Citizens Council? Do we have a representative present?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Currently, HCC is focused on getting our report with recommendations to the city budget finalized. We met last Thursday to discuss the preliminary version of our report, in addition to at least eight members of the city staff who supplied the information when we sent them questions, and we thank those eight members of the city staff very much for being so helpful. Another 15 members of the HCC contributed data and ideas for our report. It apparently takes a village to write an HCC report on the Helena city budget. The HCC members received a copy of the report the night before the meeting, and they were almost all at the meeting to make sure I got their section of the report correct. And apparently, I didn't in all cases, so now they're sending me corrections that they want incorporated, and I'm busy doing that. We'll be meeting again this Thursday, the 20th, to vote on the final version of our report, and that's where we stand right now.
Thank you, Ms. Fair. Regular items. Consider first passage of an ordinance adopting by reference the state adopted 2018 edition of the International Energy Conservation Code by amending and adopting a revised Chapter Two of Title III Helena Citizen Code and set a public hearing date for June 21, 2021.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Collins, Commissioners. Tonight, we are asking you to consider first passage of an ordinance adopting by reference the state adopted 2018 edition of the International Energy Conservation Code by amending and adopting the revised Chapter Two of Title III of Helena City Code. Currently, the City of Helena is enforcing the 2012 edition of the Energy Code. The remaining 2018 editions of the I codes and the Uniform Plumbing Code and National Electrical Code was adopted by ordinance 3280 in February of 2020. At that time, with the previous additions, the state had not adopted the 2018 Energy Code to allow additional public listening sessions and input. The State of Montana Building Codes Program noticed the final adoption of the 2018 Energy Code. It was received by the City Building Division on February 13 of 2021. The administrative rules of Montana require that the codes adopted by certified local jurisdictions be the same as those adopted by the state, and they have 90 days from that February 13, 2021, to adopt this version of the same code. The codes adopted by the state may not be altered and must be adopted by the certified jurisdictions in the same edition with the same amendments. And once the city has adopted these codes, we must send that notification to the state along with a copy of the ordinance. The Montana Code Annotated requires that the codes and amendments be available for public comment and, or public viewing and comment for at least 30 days prior to that final adoption, and those will be available in the city clerk's office beginning tomorrow. Much of the language in the state amendments to the new Energy Code corrects code section numbers that have changed between the different additions. The air sealing and structure air leakage requirements was clarified to require testing that in the previous code gave a phase-in period for contractors to get used to, yes, you are going to do those tests on air sealing. Through the state's adoption process, they did adopt Appendix Chapter RA, the solar-ready provisions. Now, the building division is not recommending this chapter for adoption. Because the state does not review or issue permits for one- and two-family dwellings, they will not enforce this provision, but has allowed certified jurisdictions the option of adopting this appendix chapter. By adopting this appendix, it would require all new one- and two-family dwellings and townhouses with roof areas greater than 600 square feet and oriented between 110 degrees and 270 degrees of true north to have solar-ready zones designated and electrical service space reserved for future installation. The provision is not inclusive of all one- and two-family dwellings and townhouses, thereby requiring some applications to provide the additional provisions, but not all. With the advancements in PV equipment technology, most systems will provide satisfactory performance in various orientations. Where individuals choose to install and plan for the future installation of solar systems, this document could be used to provide guidance to the designers and the builders. So we're in no way limiting the fact that if they do want to do solar provisions, they can definitely do that. First passage of the, by the Commission sets the course for the Building Division to comply with the state's directive to adopt the new edition of the International Energy Conservation Code and keep the city's certified enforcement program in good standing. Updating to the new edition of the Energy Code provides builders and the public with the opportunity to have high-quality and energy-efficient buildings. This evening, the Commission is asked to approve first passage of this ordinance adopting by reference the state adopted 2018 edition of the Energy Conservation Code by amending and adopting a revised Chapter Two of Title III of the Helena City Code and to set a public hearing date for June 21 of 2021. Thank you. If you've got any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Mac. Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I do just have one. I know when we had done the other adoptions earlier, and this one was not adopted, you said that you weren't sure what the public input process the state was going to do was actually going to look like at that point. What did that look like?
So what they did is they did several meetings around the state, I think Billings, Bozeman, Helena, Missoula, and they may have gone up to Kalispell. And they put out notice, public notice, and contractors, building officials, anybody can come to those meetings. I think they were all done by either Zoom or phone conference. And, you know, they would take comment if it was, and then that goes to the Building Codes Council for review and additional comments and stuff. And so once the Building Code Council agrees on any of the amendments, then it goes to a vote by that council and either passes or does not pass.
Great, great. Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission?
Yeah, just a question. So I'm curious, the discussion, if you're aware of it, about the RA appendix at the statewide level? If other municipalities are adopting the RA, if, what concerns, since it sounds like at least the building, you know, recommendatory body recommended that it be adopted for the state?
Yeah, you know, as far as the, what the Building Codes Council, from what I recall, they wanted to give jurisdictions the ability to enforce that. The appendix in the Energy Code have to be specifically adopted in order for certified jurisdictions to be able to use that. So the Building Codes Council adopted it on the state level, even though the state doesn't enforce it, but it gave the certified jurisdictions the option of doing that adoption. I did reach out to Billings, Bozeman, Laurel, Missoula, Missoula County, and Kalispell. Did not get a return call from Grape Falls. No one has adopted Appendix RA, but they all have that same feeling. If somebody wants to use it, they can certainly use it as a guidance for that installation.
Any other comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments? Do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, first, I have Mark Judeman.
Who?
Mark Judeman.
Okay, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Mark Judeman, resident of Helena. I'm a member of the Citizens Conservation Board, Chair of the Energy and Transportation Committee, but I am not speaking on behalf of the board, just as an individual citizen, just indicating support for passage of the 2018 Energy Code. And also, I want to indicate that it's likely that the Citizen Conservation Board will weigh in prior to or at the hearing on June 21. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Judeman. Any other comments, public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other raised hands. I've received no other written public comment.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve first passage of an ordinance adopting the reference the state adopted 2018 editions of the International Energy Conservation Code by amending and adopting a revised Chapter Two of Title III Helena City Code and set a public hearing date for June 21, 2021.
Second?
Any final comments from the Commission? It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mac. Consider a resolution of intentions to vacate the full width of the alley adjacent to Lot 11, 12, and 13 in Block 36 of the Flower Garden addition to the City of Helena, Montana, in exchange for the city easement located on Lot 14A. Director Leland?
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. All right, I think we're sharing everything. And we'll move forward. This is a street vacation for the Flower Garden addition. As you can see, let's get that, on this slide here, it is located behind the new U-Haul building that used to be the Kmart, and these are the Kmart ponds that the city owns, are our stormwater ponds, that collect our main basin down Davis Gulch, and it is a big infrastructure for the city. And then these lines here, you can see the yellow, the green, and the purple are sewer lines for the City of Helena. They're our main transmission mains that collects the downtown of Helena, goes across the interstate, and then to our treatment plant. These lines were brought to our attention, that they go across the applicant, the owner of the property, the applicant's property, and we do not have a recorded easement that we could find. I don't know if the lots or how this happened, they've been there for several years, I mean, 40 years out there, so we don't know why this was never recorded, but we have an unrecorded easement across private property for our two main transmission main. The owner of Big Sky Auto Glass is willing to trade our, trade an easement for the vacation of the right-of-way in the alley. It's unused, undeveloped, and can never be used for the City of Helena as right-of-way. There is no turnaround. It's only 12 feet wide, and it goes to nothing. It dead-ends at the interstate and is on the embankment for the Kmart pond, stormwater ponds. So he is willing to trade that vacation for an easement, a 30-foot easement, to go across his property. He'll still be able to park on it, which is allowed by the easements. It's just a sewer main that goes underneath it. We don't need the surface rights, as long as no buildings are on top of it. We are good with everything, and so he'll trade an easement for the vacation of the right-of-way, and our recommendation is to vacate the 12-foot alley in exchange for an easement. The fair market value of the property is $14,398.
Which property?
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
What's that?
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No, you said if fair market value is $14,000, which property you were referring to?
Well, the fair market value is, Mayor, is the alley that is located here, the 12-foot alley by 143 feet. That is the $14,000 for the fair market, and usually an easement is anywhere from 50 to 25% of the property, so it works out pretty well in the favor of the city, because usually you negotiate easement before the mains are on there.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the Commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. For Director Leland, I guess, no concerns from access from public safety that were expressed to you?
Mayor, Commissioners, no. It is undeveloped, and it is, it can't be driven on right now because it's on the embankment, so there is no concerns.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the Commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands. I've received no written public comment on this item.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to accept a resolution of intention to vacate the full width of the alley adjacent to Lots 11, 12, and 13 in Block 36 of the Flower Garden addition to the City of Helena, Montana, in exchange for a city easement located on Lot 14A.
Any final discussion? It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution to vacate Powderhorn Court located off Alpine View Drive within Aspen Park at Mountain View. Director Leland?
Mayor, Commissioners, we talked about this at the previous Commission meeting. This is Powderhorn Court, not street. I missed that one, so apologize. I missed that one, so apologize. But this is Aspen Park and Mountain View Meadows subdivision that was platted several years ago and has gone through several phases. And this is part of a phase that was platted but never developed. East Helena is located over in this direction. This is the new signal on Highway 12 and Big, or, uh, the other subdivision. And then the insurance company is sitting here. And you drive up, and it's located off of Highway 282. And this is the little court that we are talking about. Again, it is undeveloped and platted property. As you can see here, it's just platted. There is no development. There's, it's adjacent to a city park. And then the applicant's property is located here. He would like to develop it. And with his plans, no longer is wanting to have a turnaround. It's going to be a looped, looped street, a looped private street. So the turnaround is not needed. So he would like to use the right-of-way and vacate it, giving three quarters of it to the applicant and only a quarter to the, to the park property. The park property is up here. Typically, it is 50, 50/50 split. That is how it's usually located when you have two, two property owners that have, have ownership in the right-of-way, basically, because it is the, it's a, the right-of-way is taken out of the adjacent property. It's like a glorified easement. So it goes back in the plating process, process to the adjacent properties. In this one, we can shift it if there is agreement between the two properties. And since the applicant is the one that dedicated the property, platted the property, and is just looking to use the undeveloped property in some other manner to fill his development needs and goals, we are proposing the 25/75 split will work because there is going to be access. And then also a 12, 12-inch water main going through the new easement. It's not going to be dedicated. There'll just be a private street on top of it, is the proposal to go forward. The fair market value of the property is $43,691. However, since it was never used as right-of-way, never used for the public, and it was just platted, unused, and then future needs want to basically just change the right-of-way and how the land is used, we are recommending that that fee is waived in this instance. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Director Leland. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I know, I don't remember that when we heard this the first time. I remember then, it might have been Mr. Runkel that mentioned it, that the neighbors were fine with this change. Is that correct?
Mayor, commission, yes, they're fine with the change. All of the neighbors in the area that are actually surrounding it are actually owned by him or the city of Helena.
Right.
The other neighbors that do have some houses out there are fine with this change.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I have no raised hands and no written public comment on this item.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to conditionally approve the resolution to vacate the right-of-way between lots 1 and 2 and block 8 of Aspen Park and Mountain View Meadow, known as Powderhorn Court. The right-of-way will be divided as represented in the attachment with 75% of the right-of-way going to the applicant, 25% to city park property, and waiver of the transfer fee of $43,691.52, with the condition of creating an easement for the existing 18-inch sewer main currently located in the right-of-way.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution to create special improvement lighting district number 399 in the city of Helena, Montana. Director Danielson?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
On April 19th, we heard resolution of intention to create a special improvement lighting district in the Skelton subdivision area. And we have been petitioned by Northwestern Energy to create a light district for existing lights in the district that are adjacent to 105 properties north of Roadrunner Street, both sides of Curlew Street, Black Hawk Street, Blue Heron Street, and the north and eastern parts of Sandpiper Loop in the Skelton Edition Phase 2, Sequence 1, 2, and 3, as shown in the certificates of survey that were attached to the packet. There are currently 15 existing lights in that district. They were installed in 2003 and '04, and a special improvement lighting district was never created at the time. At this point, Northwestern Energy did a audit of their lights when they were going through their districts for the installation of LED replacement lights and found and discovered that no create, no light district was created in this area. And so they petitioned the city a couple of years ago. But due to staffing changes and turnover, the city was not able to move this forward in front of the commission until just recently, when I arrived and it came to my attention. So tonight, we are asking the commission to consider the approval of the special improvement lighting district that was petitioned by the city. I will note that there were 105 notices that went out to the property owners. We received seven written protests from property owners and one phone call that I received today from a, a woman that had no access to email or internet to come onto the Zoom meeting. And so just in general, there were a couple other folks that approached the city and had questions as to why the district was never created at the time of installation. And so I reached out to Northwestern Energy. And the response was, is that it was typically how lighting districts are created is the, the developer approaches Northwestern Energy. And then Northwestern Energy formulates the costs through the Montana Commission to pass that on to the rate payers. And then they do the installation at the time the other infrastructure is going underground. And after which, they petitioned the city to create the light district. And so in this case, they don't know how it happened, but it was overlooked and did not discover it until a couple of years ago when they petitioned the city. So not sure what happened on their end or even the city's end. I know there was a question of, why doesn't the city have checkmarks and, and check boxes in place to have not discovered this? And that was one of the questions that came forward to the city is why, how did this ever get looked on the city's part? And due to my lack of history with the city, I, I don't know how it got overlooked. I know that the planning department has their, you know, checklist to move things forward, to approve subdivisions. However, the finance department is responsible for creating the light district. Could have just been the, you know, lack of communication between the two departments or a lack of misunderstanding. At this time, I don't know. But I am looking at developing our procedures for the creation of light districts with the city, among other policies and procedures that I'm developing. And so we'll hopefully be able to close the gap on, on things like this in the future. I can summarize some of the protests, but I do believe that they were in your packet as well. So at this time, if you have any questions of me, I can answer them before we, we move on.
Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I have one question. When I was reading the protest, one thing that came to mind was some of the questions that we've gotten in the past about how neighbors can get a light removed. And I'm wondering if maybe you can explain that process briefly.
So that was one of the questions that came through about the creation of the light district. What if I don't want a light district? It's my understanding that Northwest, they can work directly with Northwestern Energy and have the lights removed, and they can work directly with, with the property owners. This case, in this instance, though, is creating the boundaries as well at the district. So I don't believe that one property owner can have the, the light removed from their property and remove themselves from the district unless this particular resolution was amended to take them out of the district.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the commission?
So Ms. Danielson, this, this is sort of an anomalous one. You know, normally we see lighting districts created by developers, like Mr. Runkel has done out at Mountain View Meadows, when he owns all of the property. Or we have situations where you have a district that already exists, and people say, I want to light in, I want to light out, and you get your certain number of protests. Do we have any precedent previously in the city of Helena or anywhere we've looked where an existing group of homeowners have been sort of forced to take on a lighting district that somebody else has essentially built and said, now you all pay for it?
Not to my knowledge.
Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, a question for someone in staff. When this came up a few weeks ago, one of the protests was from someone in a condo association. And the difficulty that they had was being assessed for a benefit that they would not receive. And I, I wonder if there is maybe any comment on, on that, or?
There were, the only comment that was similar to that was that there were, the lights were continually going out and not being replaced in a timely manner. But none that indicated that they were not benefiting from the lights at all. There were comments that felt like, I'm on a fixed income, and this is a hardship to me, but not the fact that they weren't benefiting from the lights.
Perhaps I misunderstood, thank you.
Any other comments from the commission?
Yes, one more fault. Can I ask, Ms. Danielson, who has been paying for these the last 15 years?
Northwestern Energy. And they have indicated that this, they are not passing those costs off to the property owners. They're only calculating the costs as they currently exist to pass off to the property owners in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Future as in?
If this resolution is passed, it will go as part of our annual assessments that are sent to the Department of Revenue, and it'll be on their tax year 21 bills that will be paid in tax year, or fiscal year 22. Does that make sense?
Yes. Thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
Mayor, before you move to, I just want to make up one clarification, if I may.
Go ahead.
There were no condominiums within this area. It is all single-family dwellings. And it's a 15, just wanted to make sure and clarify that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alshok. Do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I have no raised hands, and I've received no written public comment.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Whoa. No motion going, I guess. This is dead on arrival. Thank you, Ms. Danielson.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I, if I could, I would suggest some action definitively approve or deny so that the staff can get back to Northwest Energy on the status of the lighting district creation. Otherwise, I think we're, we need something, either motion to table or approve or deny, rather than just leave it hanging with no decision.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jordan. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if I have the complete motion here, but I guess I would move to approve a resolution to create special improvement lighting district number 399 in the city of Helena, Montana.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
No.
Commissioner Dean.
No.
Commissioner Logan.
No.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion fails zero to four.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move back to presentations. Helena Tourism Business Improvement District Work Plan and Budget Presentation. Director Opitz? I think you're on mute.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and
No mute.
I please to
Still can't hear.
Can you hear me?
Well, the transcript is picking her up.
Ms. Opitz, you are unmuted. I believe that the problem is with your mic locally.
So they can hear me on Zoom, but you can't.
Okay, Ms. Opitz, we'll come back to you, and we'll move on to Helena Business Improvement District Work Plan, fiscal year 2022. Miki Zuckert.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Director Zuckert?
Do we have the same problem? Mayor and Commissioners, can you hear me?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, it appears that Zoom participants are able to hear Ms. Zuckert and Ms. Opitz, but we are not hearing them in the room.
Oh. So. Well, we are experiencing technical difficulties, so please bear with us. Like I said in the beginning, we may experience that, so. Okay, would you try yourself, Ms. Zuckert? Director Zuckert?
Can you hear me?
Oh, no.
No.
Try again, Ms. Zuckert.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You can? Yay! Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Glad we got that worked out. So I, you should have in front of you the work plan and the budget proposal. And so I'm just going to go over a couple of highlights and then ask if anybody has any questions, and we can just move forward if that sounds all right with all of you. So just a couple of the great highlights I wanted to mention are some upgrades in the streetscape beautification that we've done this year. You might have just noticed. We installed some trash cans last week. We've got new banners hanging. Soon, hopefully in the next two weeks, you'll see the tree installation on the 300 block, which we're all pretty excited to see that. I know that's been about a six-year project. And then some of the partnered projects that we did this year that I thought were really fun to highlight is we did create the single downtown map for wayfinding, parking attractions, and tourist information. And that was a partnered project with the Chamber, Embac, Tourism Alliance, the city. And that was under the master plan. So that was a fun project to, to complete. And we used a local artist, David Goodson, to help design the map. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to get your hands on one of those. We also just awarded our fourth annual facade grant. So that program continues to go strong, and we get participation in that every year, anywhere from three to six applicants. And we wore it up to $10,000. And then the piece on the assessment, the methodology piece of that, we aren't requesting any change or difference this year. I will note that in my actual work plan and budget proposal, I was working with the finance team last week, and we came up with a new assessment total, which is about a $7,000 difference from what you see in the packet. So just on my end, I will work on making sure that the budget is balanced. But as far as the assessment goes, we aren't requesting a change for this year. Next year, we are intending to come in with a, with a new proposal. But this year, we do not. So with that, I will answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Zuckert. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I have two questions.
Go ahead.
The first one is, and I just want to be sure that I'm correct in my assumption, on page five of your report, under the Programs and Services, it has the streetscape beautification. Is that the trees?
That is not the trees. So that includes, the trees are actually a this fiscal year project. So that's an accomplishment for this year. Hopefully, we'll have that done by the end of this month. Hopefully we'll have that done by the end of this month. That is dealing with trash pickup, the banner program, and the landscaping and the flowers that we do. Sorry, not the flowers. I, I divided that out. Sorry, not the, not the flowers.
Okay, great. And then, Mr. Mayor, my second question is if a member of the public would like to get one of the wayfinding maps, where can they find one?
Lots of different places. Thanks for that question, Commissioner Dean. So we have them at our office, which we are naming the trailhead, so 330 Jackson Street. They're actually also at the city county building. The Chamber has them, several of the local businesses downtown have them, most of the hotels have them in town, the Tourism Alliance has them. They're in a lot of different locations. I also believe the airport has them as well, so you should be able to find them just about anywhere.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Any comments from the public? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands and no written public comment on this item.
Thank you, Director Zuckert.
Thank you.
Director Opitz, are you, are you still around?
I am, thank you.
We can hear you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I will highlight a few items. Like Miki said, you also should have my work plan and budget in front of you. The Helena Tourism Business Improvement District will continue to base our marketing and development strategies on our mission, which is to promote and preserve Helena as a unique destination and create vibrant growth in our local economy. And so we will do that, continue to do that work. Of course, we do have the safety of residents and visitors in mind and will continue to stay informed, continue to work with local county, city, and our state partners to make sure that we are encouraging those safe practices. And so kind of, you know, back to our original marketing, this past year, we, we did a lot of creating awareness and front of mind awareness for visitors to make sure that they don't forget about Helena, but we were not actively marketing. We will begin that shortly and mainly leisure recruitment, working on our drive markets, and really definitely promoting Helena as a halfway destination between Glacier and Yellowstone. We do want to ensure that visitors have a real quality experience and that is a real high priority. We want to make sure that, again, we're helping our local stakeholders, make sure that we understand that what visitors need may change, and we're trying to be proactive with answering a lot of those questions with our newly redesigned website, offering different tools and options for them to reach us, whether that's through our social media platforms or email or by phone call. We will also continue to highlight our Tourism Business Improvement District Grant Program. So those finances are set aside to be able to encourage year-round tourism. And so we just want to make sure that our local organizations know that that program is available and those grant dollars are available. That also includes for sports and tournaments, which, you know, we tried to support the Helena School District, Montana High School Association, make sure that we're emphasizing that Helena has a great deal to offer those that appreciate the fine arts. Obviously, outdoor recreation is big. We will continue to highlight that, those opportunities as well as promote and educate visitors on what to expect with outdoor recreation. And yeah, continue to try to get Helena some, some good coverage through our media relations. And so with that said, I am open to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Opitz. Questions from the commission? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Ms. Opitz, for that presentation. I had two questions. The first one, and you started mentioning it and I'm just wondering if you can expand on it a little bit. The promoting Helena as being the halfway point between Yellowstone and Glacier, I'm wondering if you can talk about some of the efforts that you're undertaking for that? And then with that, have you been in communication at all with like Yellowstone Forever or Glacier Conservancy? I know that there were Helena High Kids that helped do an art project at the airport to promote our proximity to Glacier. And maybe that, I'll ask that question first and then I'll ask my second one after.
Sure. Those are great questions, Commissioner. We are partnering very closely with the Helena Convention and Visitors Bureau to promote Helena as the halfway destination. So I feel like our, I believe that our marketing efforts are very balanced in that they are promoting kind of exploring all the wonderful attractions, everything from business shopping to, again, outdoor recreation, where we're more highlighting it as a place to stay, maybe trying to assist travelers that maybe have underestimated how big our state is and how much distance is between the two parks and that maybe with the high numbers in visitation to our national parks, that maybe just having a little bit of downtime and catching their breath is important before moving on to the next destination. And so we have worked with our creative marketing agency Sovereign to create Between the Parks piece, highlighting that. It's an animated piece that will get a little more, quite a bit more shelf life out of in that it will work for us spring, summer, and fall in highlighting those activities. And to answer your second question, that's a great question as well. We have not, but that is on our list of things to do to work with those, the Glacier and Yellowstone and those connections. So maybe even locally, I, I was unaware that the Helena High students are, are working to promote that. So thank you for informing me of that and we will definitely explore that. It was something that we had started to do and with the pandemic, it kind of slid. So those efforts will be reinvigorated.
Awesome. One more question, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if you could talk, in your report, there was a section talking about the frontline training that TBID offers, and I'm wondering if you can explain what that program is and one, either how businesses find out about it or, or how we can do more outreach to encourage their participation?
Sure. So that program is typically offered at a minimum one time a year, either in the spring or the fall. We usually try to do that via word of mouth. We include it in our newsletters and it is training, hands-on training where we rent a transportation. We have a bus and we try to highlight any businesses that want to come forward and present any new opportunities that they have, make sure that those frontline trainings that are at the attractions, retails, restaurant, that they can easily be able to help visitors with a drop of a hat. And if they have the right tools and resources and know how to find it, that they don't have to have all of the answers, but that they know that we're here as a resource, the Convention and Visitors Bureau is there as a resource, and they're, they're driving those visitors to those tools. So we usually try to visit a couple of major attractions so that those frontline trainings or those frontline employees can actually experience them firsthand and so feel more comfortable sharing and talking about them. Your question is super relevant in that, you know, obviously there wasn't a frontline training this spring and we're looking to become more resourceful or how can we utilize tech? How can we expand this program, especially with the lack of workforce? You know, oftentimes, even if we set up these trainings at the last minute, businesses have to cancel because they, they're, they're short of staff that day. So we need to get creative. We're, we're looking at how we can do that. Maybe it's us going to those businesses and/or being able to offer opportunities for employees when they're not working. So whether that's discounts, whether the T-bid picks up, you know, picks up the bill or offers, you know, free tickets to Gates of the Mountains or to go experience local restaurants or retailers downtown, we are open to any and all suggestions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands. I see no written public comment on this item.
Thank you, Director Opitz. Draft preliminary fiscal year 2022 budget work session two. Manager Hallashock and/or Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. It's just me tonight. So during our last work session, Director Danielson provided the general overview and highlighted the major issues within the draft preliminary budget. The actual preliminary budget, we anticipate submitting to you all on May 26th. That is the, the third and final draft session and then that moves us in June into the preliminary budget review. So just want to remind all of you that we are still in that draft phase and all edits and comments are taken. So tonight, just a quick overview of some follow-up items from last time and then as well, offer opportunity for questions and follow-up tonight from our team. We do have two presentations as well, so I'll, I'll get started to keep us moving. Madam, oh, thank you. Just a quick overview of what we'll go over, a review of the balanced budget, reserve policies, my recommendations, department presentations again, and then a review of the next work sessions. Just as a reminder, there is a definition in Montana code annotated of what a balanced budget actually legally is, and it's budgeted appropriations that must not exceed the projected beginning balance, beginning cash balance plus estimated revenue. So the general fund draft preliminary example for general fund is offered on the screen and as submitted in this draft preliminary budget is balanced. Next slide, please. There's a difference between a balanced budget and a structurally balanced budget and this summary provides to you what the, what is a structurally balanced budget. I'm just wondering, Madam Clerk, is the screen also in Zoom partial like this?
No, it is not.
Okay.
Madam Manager, I, I will let the commission members know too, on your iPads, you should be able to see the full screen.
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay. Thank you. So just as a reminder, a structurally balanced budget is two parts. The first is total projected revenues, which equal or exceed total projected expenditures. And two, expend, spending excess fund balance on one-time non-routine expenditures provided funding from previous years is available and a plan is in place to, not to build ongoing expenditures in this type of funding. So one-time funding remains one-time funding. Next slide. So in this example, you'll see that balancing with a plan to use excess resources, which we are suggesting from prior years on one-time expenditures is, is noted below. So you'll see there's a deficit of $4,505,457,819. That's based on their estimated revenues minus budgeted expenditures. Then below, you see there are additional adjustments based on the movement of excess funds, which leaves us at a net deficit of 1.6 million. That amount would be coming again from additional excess reserves. What's unique in the preliminary draft budget that had not existed before is that we are actually suggesting revenue policy, excuse me, reserve policies. So based on those policies, we result, we run into excess budget reserves. Those excess reserves are those that we would be utilizing to cover these deficits. Next slide. So how does the general fund become structurally balanced? You can defer funding for new ongoing cost requests. We can increase, increase our rates, reduce or eliminate existing ongoing costs. So those are the three ways that we could typically make a structurally balanced budget. Tonight, I want to offer up my own recommendations to you to meet that structurally balanced budget. Next slide. In front of you, you'll see a chart. On that chart is the budgeted versus actual revenue since 2019. And what I want to show to you is the difference between what happens when you utilize the budget, the budgeted revenue to set limitations as opposed to the adjusted final budget. What we have not done in the recent years is adopt the final budget. And adopting a final budget means you actually revise the preliminary budget to reflect actual end-of-year revenues. So in 2019, you'll see that we had actual revenue of $850,549 beyond what was budgeted. And then for fiscal year 2020, we had $664,723,000 more than budgeted. So always, when you set a budget, you start with a conservative number like you would in your home. Same exists here. And then your actual revenue could be more. And that is what we are anticipating. You will not see this projected actual budget in the budget document because it is a budget document. So we are not counting on those projected revenues, but I wanted to make you aware of what could in fact be the actual projected number. So we could see closer to $600,000 more just based on conservative projections. So at this point, you're seeing really within the general fund, just focusing in on the general fund. The remaining funds, we do not see a significant structural problem within the budget. The general fund, though, is the one that traditionally lags in its information and then we have a little to less flexibility in, in adjusting revenue sources. So in this example, with the, my recommendation here, my intention is to lower or reduce the operating expenses that could be ongoing expenses out of the budget and set those aside until we get our actual revenues. So what I'm recommending to the commission as part of this preliminary budget submittal is that I submit to you all the recommendation that reduces the ongoing expenses until the end of year, end of year revenues are received, knowing we may see nearly $600,000 in actual receipts. So we would not, I would not be recommending that we approve the internal or grade adjustments in, in existing positions. Those would be about $242,509. I would also wait and hold to those, that cost of living adjustment, which you saw, we created a repeatable method in, in actually setting what a cost of living adjustment would be. I would recommend cutting that in half and again, waiting until our revenues actually show that additional outcome of 600,000 more and that would be an additional. of 600,000 more, and that would be an additional $155,000. That brings us to potentially spending $499,700. So those are the ongoing costs that we could actually see funding right out the chute. Those would be my priorities for you all. Then the next priority would be on to new positions. Anything beyond that $499,700 would then be up to me to prioritize based on operations and of course, those of the priorities of the commission. But knowing that those are ongoing expectations of the general fund, we'd want to make sure that our revenues actually hit that number and then move forward. Last, the, there are many one-time projects that we could be funding through the federal dollars. Those are the ones that the, under the America's Response, it's President Biden's bill, the federal bill, the ARPA. Those dollars wouldn't also be analyzed at the time we actually receive them. We are still evaluating what kinds of projects. But know that underneath all of the work that we have in this budget, our intention is to actually move forward larger, long-term projects with those federal dollars and that this base budget really keeps us moving forward at a reasonable pace on things that we can actually afford moving forward. Next slide, please. I want to talk also about the reserve policies that have been offered up. We, of course, just a reminder, those reserves are intended to address risk exposures like natural disasters and pandemics, volatility of revenue sources or expenditures, and dependency on subsidies. The general fund in particular is the fund that relies on property tax. And then property tax is typically the most dependable and least volatile of all sources of funding. Next slide. So going back to the general fund, again, to go after these subsidies, general fund itself is a stable revenue. It has property taxes, state shared revenue, and charges for services. In the larger picture, it's stable. There has been no history of rapidly rising operating costs or volatility from revenue. Overall, we do, though, in fact, as an organization, rely on subsidies quite frequently from the general fund to cover key operations. While the recommended policy reserve is at $3,774,000, that note, I just want to note on here, we did reduce it by that 100,000. That was an oversight on the early addition of this draft for the Housing Trust Fund. What we ultimately end up with is a $1486,700 excess reserve. So what to do with the excess reserves is the question that we end up with at the end of the fiscal year next year. Next slide. So what I wanted to suggest to you all tonight is a further reserve policy set aside. Currently, within the reserve policies identified, we do allow for the build-out of capital improvements. Next year, we will be more direct in setting a longer-term capital improvement program. This budget does not reflect a longer-term capital improvement plan. What I wanted to recommend to all of you is that we revise and those proposed reserve policies to set aside a contingency of 20% for any excess reserves annually into an emergency disaster spending fund. Those, while reserves are intended to be emergencies, they're also made available for other capital improvements. So I want to make sure that we continue to maintain a specific set aside just for emergencies. These would not be approved without city manager approval. And overall, any of the excess revenues, before anything is spent by the departments who are managing an oversight of these funds, the manager must approve. I want to point out also, the Civic Center, within this budget, you'll see around $450,000 in operations plus $184,000 needed for a full reserve, based on what that operation should look like. Also, the golf course, $235,000 in operations plus a $231 reserve needed, just to meet the policies that we're discussing in this budget. If we were to just look at the excess general fund reserve, we would be at almost a million dollars, over a million dollars, I should say, excuse me. So Civic Center, I want to note, has revised their revenues. And based on their projection, they do believe that they'll get closer to that operations number. So I would just say that the next iteration, which will come out on the 26th to all of you, we should be closer to that operations number. But the one thing I really want to talk mostly about with the golf course is that debt burden that's been put on to the golf course. The question I had for the finance director was how is it that this golf course was burdened with a loan that it could not afford? It was fairly obvious it was running right at or below budget or over budget pretty consistently. And as a result, obviously, it was a debt against our general fund. So I don't know that it is an appropriate debt against the golf course. And my recommendation would be to put that debt back on to the general fund as was primarily expected and the reason for the loan itself. Again, it would not have been, on its own, would not have been made available to the golf course. Next slide. Some additional policy issues to be addressed. That, we don't need to address them with, as part of this budget, but what we'll be working on over the next year. There are a lot of legacy issues that we're working on overall. It's been a lot of time that we need to focus on internal charges and shared county services. Just want to go through the, really quickly, the facilities team and how that budgeting internally works. The information technology team and other shared county services, our human resources, and then chargebacks internally. And then last, the finance team as well. We could be working and looking at the city manager's office and the city attorney's office, as well as the commission's chargeback to those funds that have not been traditionally charged. We also need to evaluate the classifications. There are quite a few classifications that do not outwardly make sense with the types of class, the types of positions within them. Really thankful for our human resources team. They do bring a lot of experience and will be able to use their background in helping evaluate our classifications. Also, next year, we will be looking at the rates that we charge as part of our enterprises, as well as the assessments. As you know, because of the book of fees, I stopped that conversation from moving forward because I could not find a method that was repeatable or clear within those book of fee charges when we were increasing them. So this time, we'll be moving into rate and assessment evaluations through next year so that we have better understanding of when we need to make changes. And then last, more policies to help stabilize our organization. Our debt also needs to be reviewed as part of its overall burden onto programs. Another one, if you look at the parking program, it's over $6 million worth of debt, which is basically a lease purchase. And then our investments, our yielding a very low return. So we need to be reviewing our investments. Last, oops, one more, one more item. I know we've been talking a lot about these regional conversations and these regional assets, and Civic Center is one of them. All of our recreational activities outdoors, our soccer fields, our baseball fields, those are all regional assets. The community expects and utilizes, even the state utilizes in some way, our organizational, our community assets that are regional. And I think there's more to be had around a conversation that regionalizes funding these assets that everyone relies on and not just the city of Helena. Thank you. And last, in addition to the strategy, as I previously outlined, as well as the federal conversation, the federal spending conversation we had during this last week's administrative meeting, I want to let you know that we're looking at a longer view than we ever have as a team. The commission has adopted its first strategic outcomes and as part of this budget, and our work plan is intended to move forward those outcomes in a longer view as well. The opportunity within this budget is that you get to see the work that we're anticipating doing and assuring whether or not those outcomes actually, that work plan will actually yield the outcomes that you're looking for. So this is the opportunity for us to not only look at dollars, but also to look at activities and ensure that we're hitting them for you. I want to note that the public works, work plan was not in the document, but will be added to the May 26 draft. And it was, it has far more detail than is found in the narrative. I will also plan to send that out after this meeting, so you have it in advance. And just as a reminder, this week on the 19th, from 4:00 to 8:00, we will have additional staff presentations if we do not provide enough information to you all tonight. And then on May 26, we'll have the next budget session where we will revise the document and provide to you the next preliminary draft. And then all through the month of June, we'll do our actual first and second readings on the adoption of our preliminary fiscal year 22 budget. Next slide, I think we're ready for department presentations, unless you have questions for me.
Comments or questions for city manager?
Mr. Mayor? Clarification, I'm assuming that in some of these department presentations, I'll be talking about some of the new proposed FTEs in that piece, is that correct?
Thank you, Commissioner Dean. Yes, the department presentations, if there is a burden on to new FTEs within them, I believe the Parks Division actually does not, Parks Department does actually not have new FTE while the transportation team does. So just wanted to clarify that.
All right. We will now have department presentations. Director Pinoza?
Mayor, commissioners, it's nice to see you in person.
Same here.
First time in a long time. So Mayor and Commissioner.
Is that being shared on Zoom?
Is it? Oh, I need to, that's right, I'm sorry.
Okay. There you go.
Is it now?
I can see it.
Yes, it looks good.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. My name's Kristi Pinoza. I'm the director of Parks and Recreation Department. We all, I also oversee Open Lands, the Civic Center, and our Urban Forestry Division. If I can get my slide to, do you have to advance? I can advance it, right? Oh, there we go. So, there we go. So I'm starting out with our above base, our capital requests. And I'll just briefly go through those. We have Kendrick Legion Field Artificial Turf. This is a large expense, and it's, this is a request based on the shared use RFP that we solicited for earlier this year, and we received two responses for. We heard that it was very difficult to share the field. It was going to be a significant amount of use. One of the things that could help ameliorate that is to have artificial turf of the infield. This is not a one-time cost. This is a, artificial turf of the infield would have to be replaced about every 10 years. We have the Wakashaw Well Project. This is the 40K, it's the balance of the authorizations for spending for the FY '21 COVID savings. So this is a project that we are starting now and expending some of those COVID funding that we received. The Kendrick Bleacher Replacements are $95,000. These were formally approved and deferred, and they are part of our ADA transition plan. Frontier and Memorial Park Playground Replacement for $247,000. This is deferred and part of our ADA transition plan. And then I included our vehicles, of course, a couple of vehicle replacements. And then some of our regular replacements and deferred maintenance, that these are really, really part of maintenance more, but because they are over the 5K, they go into these capital requests. So some playground safety net replacements, irrigation replacements, basketball court resurfacing, tennis court resurfacing. We normally do two tennis court resurfacings a year, but we didn't do any last year. So we're doing four this year, or proposing to do four this year. And basketball court rebuild and Civic Center tennis court rebuild. And this was formally approved for $120,000. We tried to do some sort of stopgap fixes to the tennis court that worked for a few years, but they do need to be rebuilt. So our golf course, we have a couple of capital requests, some replacements of greens mowers and utility carts. As manager Harlow Schelke pointed out, we have golf operations with self-supporting as an enterprise fund for almost 17 years. When the restaurant was built, which was also part of our ADA compliance transition plan in 2018, we took on debt services of approximately $240,000 annually. The projections of revenues and expenses, particularly personnel, were not accurate when they were calculating the operations of the restaurant. And it is now no longer a self-sustaining fund. You add to that our COVID losses. We looked at, we had COVID losses of almost $200,000 unrealized revenue for golf operations. And then almost $250,000 of lost revenue for the restaurant. So our current and future work for, for the, for the work on the breakout of the costs for the next two years, we'll be breaking out into cost centers, our retail shop, our golf operations and maintenance. Of course, we look at the golf course and want to continue to develop it as a multipurpose public park complex with other activities. We provide skiing, cross-country track events, and other special events out at the golf course. We'll break that out into a cost center. And then, of course, the restaurant and then our capital needs. The Civic Center, you'll see in the budget book that all of most, all of our capital requests, as well as our building repairs and maintenance, are pending future funding. We are updating our revenues for fiscal year '22, and that should allow for some of those deferred pending items to be completed. We did apply for Assured Venues Operating Grant for losses associated with ticket revenue and operational revenue losses. And we have not heard from that yet. I don't think we're, that's in the final stages yet. We received significant revenue losses from COVID at the Civic Center in last, in the last, year before last fiscal year, almost $134,000 in revenue losses. And in this current fiscal year, $343,000 up through February to date in lost revenues. Lots of events canceled. We did keep the Civic Center open and did provide related capacity for municipal court planning board meetings. And we provided discounted rates for COVID for smaller events. Our current and future work will be the breakout of our cost centers at the Civic Center, including the ballroom, our auditorium, our food and beverage, our maintenance, our rentals, our ticketed events, our capital. And then we'll be working on a business plan to reduce and eliminate general fund for operations. I wanted to point out urban forestry, our, one of our assessment funds, 237. We don't have any proposed capital for FY '22, but we're saving for large replacements and purchases in FY '23 and '24, specifically an aerial lift truck for $210K and a replaced chip truck with dump bed for $62,000 and another small pickup. We also have additional reserves that we save for Emerald Ashfore mitigation, for the potential increased removal and disposal of wood that, that costs. I also wanted to point out that the reserve policies that are in the current budget are for, specifically for operations. for, specifically for operational reserves, and for these assessment funds, we often have to save those reserves so that we can purchase, we have enough money to purchase large capital like the aerial lift truck. One update is the, we have some personnel increase for seasonals, and that is about $20,000, that is not in the current budget book but will be added. Open lands is the same, 235 account, we have some capital requests in here, 95, $19,000 for a trailer and flatbed and a super cab, and then we're looking at CARES, CARES Funding Ask for a Trails Ambassador and Dog Education Etiquette Position for two years, $50,000 in fiscal year 22 and 23. There is some updating that we need to do to the revenues and expenditures in that, which brings down the ending cash balance by about $200,000. We do have some large expenses that will help spend down our reserve, our Capital 360 and some other large grant sources that we use for our fuels mitigation, our, our ending this year, our watershed work will be ending for, in fiscal year 23, and we're looking at a potential recreation natural resource management position for upcoming fiscal years, fiscal year personnel requests. So for our parks overview narrative, as Manager Harlow Shulke pointed out, and as we've discussed, we're looking at a regional parks district and considering the inclusion of the Civic Center and/or a regional arts district, and considering inclusion of the golf course as part of that regional parks district. Part of some of that work this upcoming fiscal year is proposed to be working with partnership organizations, city commission involvement in strategic planning, county support, contract with a consultant, which you'll see increased consulting costs in the general park budget. You know, we're going to be determining specific mechanisms and a public, starting a potential public involvement campaign, and all of the other activities that go along with sort of looking at and reviewing the feasibility of our regional parks district. That is all I have. If you have questions?
Thank you, Director. Comments or questions from the Commission? Go ahead Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very helpful presentation, so thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first one is just on what you were just talking about, the regional parks district, and I didn't see in here any money that was specifically budgeted to support those efforts. Do you not anticipate needing to expend additional dollars for that, or is that, you know, something that you're going to do internally in your budget?
So Mayor, Commissioner Dean, we do have additional contracted services as part of our general parks budget, so I think we increased that contracted services line item by $8,000 to have some consulting work to help us get started on that.
Okay, that's super helpful. And then the other question I had, Mr. Mayor, was on the deferred capital improvement project for the Civic Center, and I'm curious, are you planning to come back with those once the development of the business plan is concluded and things are moving there, or, you know, what is your plan for that?
Yes, so we are going to be updating our, our projected revenues for fiscal year 22, and we think we're going to be able to make up some of those costs and be able to complete some of those maintenance items. Some of those capital improvement items may still have to be deferred.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments from the Commission?
Ms. Penozzo, with regard to the Parks District and the consulting and the discussions, the last time that we had discussions on a Parks District, we hired a consultant, we went through all the rigmarole, we got to pricing, we drew the area, we pushed it all the way to the, now it's probably more realistically the 10-yard line, and then our community partners, the ones that we definitely needed, right, at a minimum Lewis and Clark County, but others just said, not, not happening. In terms of that public process, right, if we're going to expend funds and pursue this again, what are we doing to make sure we don't engage in some two-year-long discussion process, just like last time, and reinvent the same thing, just have it collapse again? Are we building in periods where we're going to check in with our community partners and friends to take their temperature to discuss? Should we have members of the public come for days and hours and weeks to talk about this, just to be like, thanks for coming?
Mayor, Commissioner Halliday, I think that's a great question. I think we will start with a internal feasibility study to determine whether or not we bring on a consultant, and if so, what we are bringing them on for. I agree, I think we need to have some buy-in, and to the extent that a consultant or contractor can help us with that, there might be some, but it would be, you're absolutely right, we need to have some of those initial steps. I need to work with you guys and our City County Parks Board to make sure that before we start expending a lot of time and energy, we are, we are moving forward with specific phases and/or milestones.
I mean, that's good. I'd recommend, you know, that we look at what, what the district has expected to cost, right, build backwards, and figure out what that looks like, for example, if Lewis and Clark County and City of Helena and Jefferson County are in. What happens if Jefferson County's not in? What happens if Lewis and Clark County's not in? What do those numbers look like, to the point where, the last time this fell apart, one city parks staff member said, well, I guess City of Helena will just create its own Parks District, right, and at that point, it was completely financially infeasible. It was just the City of Helena taxpayers once again funding every one of the community's park stuff. And so, you know, that, it would be helpful almost even to go into those discussions to know at least some sticker level shock of what it's going to cost the citizens of Helena, and it also helps know what we're paying for today, and that we're asking the members of the community to participate in outside of Helena's boundaries. I have a different question on golf, and I'll just note, you know, you were not here when that loan was taken out, I'm the, I'm the only member of this commission that was on it when that loan was taken out to, to build the unfortunate situations out at munis and the clubhouse at this point, but I just wanted to clarify that when that loan was taken out, it was based on the consulting study that we, the commission, the golf board, Parks and Recreation commissioned, specifically based on projected revenues over a four-year period, all to be financed by the golf fund. It was never intended to be a general fund obligation. Now I understand we're switching back to it being a general fund obligation, but I just want to be clear for this commission, it was always based on revenue projections up by year four, not only would we be solvent, we'd be kicking butt, and we didn't get there, so we are where we are now, but, you know, I just, yes, I want to understand, are we assuming at this point that we're looking for the golf debt funding to become a year-over-year general fund obligation at this point?
Mayor, Commissioner, I think we are going to have to do some more, we're going to have to work on our business plan and the breakout of our cost centers and our revenues, and try to figure out what that looks like moving forward, and if it's possible to support that debt funding through that enterprise fund.
If I may, that's my recommendation and not the recommendation of the staff, so my recommendation is to return the debt, which would not have been taken out against what was clearly zero-to-zero type end of balance for the, for the golf fund, so I would like to just make sure and just clarify that the staff are not recommending that, that is me recommending to the commission that we put the dollars back where it was burdened originally, based on our research. Then separately on the Parks District, I want to clarify one thing that was not a part of the conversation before, and, and that is that this, these items are items that are regional, are, they're regional assets, not just Parks District, but also our regional centers like the Civic Center, like the golf course, those places where there are conventions, and as I shared last time, we all were together, there are examples of districts where there are larger community assets within counties that all agree are those that need funding that cannot be solvent all the time. That's pretty typical for museums and special recreation centers, those are all things that as a partnered group, we can all push each other up together as opposed to compete against, so I just wanted to point those out before we move on. Thank you.
So just, I mean, to be clear, and I, I don't mean to, if it wasn't your idea to move debt servicing to the general fund, I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, it doesn't really matter to me whose recommendation it is, ultimately, the commission has to decide whether or not going forward, right, golf's debt servicing is going to become a general fund obligation, and when we're talking about structural imbalances year-over-year for the general fund, right, we've got salaries, which is the biggest piece of the ongoing obligation imbalance, but if debt is being proposed to be moved into the general fund at this point from golf, that's a year-over-year obligation, and so what I'm trying to figure out is structurally, am I looking at a couple of years of golf, right, $240,000 this year, $240,000 next year, and then we'll see, or should it be planned that this commission is just saying it's going to be a quarter million dollars every single year until the thing is paid off, and that's, that's a bigger question then for structural imbalances, so I don't care whose recommendation is, I'm just curious whether that's the recommendation overall to the commission to absorb $250,000 in golf every year.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, Commissioner Halliday, the, that's the unfortunate detriment of the initial, I understand, I was not here when the debt was sold, that the, that the golf fund wouldn't be able to cover it, but the golf munis to be outfitted without a, an oven or a refrigerator already set it out in a, in expectation that could not be met, and I, I understand that those were all things sold to you and the commission at the time, but they, they have not yielded, and, and certainly no bank would give a loan against the debt and, or the amount of funds and revenues that were provided at the time. I, I understand that there was, there was a study that said that there was a promise in the future, but I don't, but for the general fund, there would never have been a loan given. So now as far as the structural imbalance, those one-time costs, these are general fund debt, so that debt burden becomes a different conversation, very, very pointedly, and we start looking at the reserves and the excess fund. That's why I was asking and recommending that 20% setup side of those excess reserves, so we start right out the chute, pulling out anything that could stop us from setting out money for emergencies, but I do anticipate we're going to be looking in future years to those reserves to help balance out those capital improvements, which this was.
Right, I mean, and we're doing it this year, right, I mean, there's a transfer to the golf fund proposed for fiscal '22.
Yeah, Mayor and Commissioners, yes, that, there are two different ones, there's first the operations-based and second the capital-based. So the capital-based is for the loan, the second is for the operations, and that reflects COVID.
I have just a follow-up question on the regional community amenities district, I'll start renaming it. I, I know when we had that joint city-county meeting, you know, the county was interested in starting these conversations, and it sounded like first stop would be collaborating with the City-County Parks Board, and I'm wondering, are you looking at moving to the City-County Parks Board first before, before we look at, you know, these contracted services and, and everything else, and is, what does that conversation look like once it starts?
Yes, Mayor, Commissioner Dean, we have started those conversations within the City-County Parks Board. We have for the last two City-County Parks Board meetings, I think Commissioner Logan is on those. We will probably start having some more in-depth conversations about specific steps for moving forward, and yeah, we will continue to have those, yeah.
Any other comments from the Commission? Thank you, Director Penozzo. That was a long six minutes. Director Knopki.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Yes.
Mayor and Commissioners, this evening, I chose to focus on one of the, you know, the, I guess some people would call a more visible fund of part of the transportation because it does account for a lot of the bigger projects that we, we see. And just to give a summary of fiscal '21, we have the Rodney Street Reconstruction, which the pre-con is this Thursday, and, and construction is slated to begin June 1st. We have the Chip Seal that's commencing in July. We have the Benton Trail, which is pretty close to completion, it's only waiting on some punch list items, some trees, some striping, pretty minor things. The Knight Street Design, we just received the 90% plans, and we'll be reviewing those here in the coming days and probably next week. We have the Six Ward Tiff Grant Match, which on June, on the June 7th meeting, you'll be seeing the bid award for that contractor to move forward with those sidewalk repairs. We have also on the 7th, a bid award for the Lawrence Warren Improvements. We are also working with MRL and MDT on the Benton Trail Railroad Crossing. That's the portion of the Benton Trail that was pulled out at the request of MRL and MDT, and that'll finish that, basically that Benton Trail from where it ends now and cross, and puts pedestrian amenities across the tracks. And then our annual Mill and Overlay Project, which will be starting up in June and into July. Vehicles that were, were acquired this past fiscal year, we had to replace one of our asphalt rollers, and then we also replaced one of our older 2010 sweepers with a new Elgin Road Wizard. And we also purchased a leaf vac, which will help with the leaf pickups in the fall, and also with some of our MS4 stormwater things that helps reduce the phosphorus coming from those leaves. Those sweepers, I just, you'll see another one that we have budgeted for this year. Those, as we like to say, they're in self-destruct mode from day one, I mean, you're, all you're doing is picking up sand and gravel. You know, you can think of your vacuum cleaner at home, if all you do is, is a vacuum ups sand and gravel, they wouldn't last very long, but these, you know, they, we do get pretty good mileage out of them, and, but at some time, they, they do come up. In years past, we've been able to take advantage of air quality grants through the state. Those were deferred over the past couple of years, so we're hoping that those will come back around and we'll be able to get an additional sweeper or two through that. We do have one open position right now, which was a recent staff departure due to some family reasons, and we'll be looking at filling that position as soon as we can. So moving on to the fiscal year 22 proposed budget funding, we will be looking, and I just want to mention, these are all highlights, this is not a line-by-line item list, I just chose to pick out some of the, the bigger items. The street assessment methodology will be reviewed and revised as needed in this next fiscal year. ADA compliance with the sidewalk program, we will modernize the volunteer sidewalk program. Right now, it's currently funded at $150,000 through the 440. We have the strip, the Slip, Trip and Fall Hazard Program, which we discussed last Monday, that is funded at $100,000 through the street maintenance program. And the Safe Routes to School, we also funded through the street maintenance at $200,000 this year. I wanted to clarify that one for you just a little bit. In doing the Safe Routes to School, we, we struggled with how do we prioritize those routes? Which school gets the money first? So, and our Safe Routes to School maps that we have are very dated, so we thought we have some money that we go out and get a consultant to visit all the schools, identify the the city commission. And then, as we work down, we'll give them some funding maximums, basically, and they'll split those projects into those, so those will just be walking down through our next CIP over the next coming years. Other capital projects that we have in the 201 is the Rodney Street reconstruction phase two. That will pick up where phase one, which is starting here June 1st at 9th, and continue down to Helena Avenue. The Benton Trail railroad crossing match, that's, as I discussed earlier, that is slated tentatively by MDT for fiscal year '23, but that has moved twice since we have talked to them about that in the beginning. Levin Avenue mill and overlay and ADA ramps, we're looking to start like at Cruz and work our way east with some monies to improve the ADA ramps in the area, and then come through and mill those areas and put a new overlay. And where we just put some money in there, we're hoping to get to Rodney, but we'll see how those funds last. There are some additional struggles this year with oil and everything. We've been told that oil will be on a 60-day cycle, where we'll be seeing price increases every 60 days from basically Helena Sand or anybody that supplies us asphalt. Benton Avenue turn lanes, that was a project that was adopted and last year for fiscal year '21, we pushed it off till fiscal year '22, basically a carryover to coincide better with that proposed transfer station entrance redesign. It only makes sense, they're, they're in line with one another, and we believe that we can get better bids on bidding that as basically one project instead of two separate projects. The downtown multimodal study, that will be the one that's combined with the main street, looking at basically multimodal and non-motorized traffic through and how to get to downtown and out of downtown to some of our more popular trailheads in the general vicinity. Again, the safe routes to school study. Moving forward to vehicles and equipment, we're requesting a new patch truck. We're not going to get rid of the old one, our plan is to purchase this new one and have two patch crews out to make a quicker response to the potholes in the future. And also with our expanding asphalt program, we do use that patch truck for asphalt on both our potholes and some of our larger patches, and that's a struggle to coordinate too, so the second one would help efficiencies there. Again, we're asking for, requesting another Road Wizard sweeper to replace the other sweeper that's from 2010. Two dump trucks that were in this previous year's adopted budget that didn't get purchased due to the cash flowing and getting the loans out to the intercap that we just basically carried over into fiscal year '22. Those are replacing a 2000 and 2001 dump truck, and replacing those with new dump trucks that are more fuel-efficient and have a little bit more environmental constraints on them to reduce greenhouse gases. We have a pickup truck, and then the parking transit streets, parks, shared pickup sweeper that was deferred in last year, in last year's budget. We've tried to keep the green machine going with parts scavenged from the other one, and it's kept up, but it's, it's a losing cause at this point. We do have one truck that we're, the bed, for whatever reason, did not hold up, and we're going to replace that bed so we can extend life of that truck. And then we store mag chloride for, that we pre-wet our sanding material in the wintertime. We're going to replace that with a double wall tank so that we mitigate any potential spills. Staffing requests in the 201 is the deputy director and a concrete crew, which the deputy director is one FTE, and the concrete crew is one FTE and two long-term temps. The majority of the deputy and the concrete crew, we were able to redirect staffing funds where we've seen, realized efficiencies with breaking our, with the 15 street operators, breaking them into dirt and asphalt, and we've realized some efficiencies where we don't need as much overtime and on-call drivers and such, so we basically reallocated those funds. Some things that, you know, weren't in this highlighted section is a paint truck for traffic. We've had, we've struggled in the past with paint contractors coming in and getting our streets painted. Having this new paint truck would allow us to do it on our schedule, and also allow our partners to utilize the equipment to basically give a better product to the city itself. Fleet, our, we're going out for requesting monies for the inventory system, we're looking at that to help across all the departments. It's a, basically, it's a purchasing entity that they purchase on a national contract basis, so we, you know, could receive on some of those consumable items across the city. You know, we're not making any promises of any like 15 or 20% reduction, but in other cities that have done this in the past have seen significant reduction in costs. And, you know, at the very least, the programs basically pay for themselves, you may not see a decrease, but you don't ever see any increase as well. We're also requesting monies to chip seal the parking lot out of Fleet. Transit, as we explained in our transit update, there's no major changes there, we're not requesting any capital, the only thing that we're doing there is going out with the new scheduling software that RFP is out right now, and we're going to be expecting those in the next week. Parking, last but not least, we adjusted to the budget to anticipate projected revenue losses due to COVID, and basically just different patterns that people have. You know, a lot of people are returning to work, but a lot of people are also going with the model of working from home or having certain staff work from home, so we're going to see a reduction. We're hoping not a huge one, but we anticipated that, and if it comes out better than the fund will be better. We are, just as a note, with the weather getting better, we're seeing those on-street parking revenues getting closer to what we saw pre-COVID, so that's encouraging to see, and noting that people are coming to the downtown. We reclassified the admin three position that was there previously into a parking control officer and admin clerk slash admin clerk. We have some, we have basically 2.75 FTEs for the parking control officers now, so if one goes, is out sick or on vacation, that significantly reduces the enforcement staff. So what we planned with this one is that one could backfill, help out in the office. So that's that one. We also have budgeted some ADA improvements, which came from an ADA study that we had done last year. And, you know, we're still working off some reserves that we had in the parking budget. We'll have a more detailed projection of where we think we're going to end up. It's just, as everyone noted, you know, revenues are starting to come back, it's just, it's been very hard with the COVID to see where we're actually at. And the only other thing that we added to parking is we added some hours of overtime for the staff in the wintertime, so if we have large winter storm events, then they can be out and get the facilities cleared for a safe, safe facility for people to use. That's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Knopki. Madam?
Oh, I was just going to add a couple of things if I could, Mayor.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, David, Director Knopki. I wanted to just add a couple of key points on the presentation he shared, and also on the transit budget itself. So, Director, I think I have a question for you, but I think it relates mostly to this long-term debt conversation and transfers and internal transfers. And I don't know that the transit program has been discussed in the past as one that has a routine transit transfer that happens every year, so I was hoping that we might be able to talk a little bit more about that with the commission. And then also the, for lack of a better term, a parts store is really what Director Knopki was, was sharing. Oftentimes, local governments will purchase parts over time, and those parts become obsolete, and then they sit on the shelf. And the intention with this kind of approach internally would be that within the Fleet Division in particular, or within the Fleet team, they, an organization comes in and purchases those parts, then we no longer have the burden of those loss, of those parts, but as an asset, they also are available citywide for other parts that may not otherwise be made available through a wholesale retail type operation within the organization. So previous organizations have seen almost a $200,000 to $300,000 just parts purchased out front of things that they would never see otherwise, because they would sit on a shelf. So I just want to underscore that really great innovation that David has brought forward. And then last, just on the transit transfer. David, can you answer that question? How often do we, how often do we do a transfer across?
It's an annual transfer across. That is one of the things that we are looking at with the new, you know, possible demand-response. That's why we're, part of the reason we're moving to a different software is ours is a bit outdated, and it's not as user-friendly, so that's what we're hoping to accomplish with this initially. But moving forward to looking at more of a demand-response system instead of our fixed routes, as Commissioner Dean alluded to in the transit update, we had pretty significantly more ridership when we were basically dial-a-ride. And that's basically what demand-response is, it's just a new fancier term. But we feel we can serve more of the community than just along those fixed routes and with the paratransit that we do provide. Paratransit is provided with those who qualify, but some people don't qualify for that, and, you know, some of those places where people live are quite a distance from our fixed route facilities. This demand-response would basically use AI to coordinate the pickups and put people in a little bit closer general area of a virtual stop, and allow people, more people to utilize our bus system, which in turn, you know, will increase our ridership, obviously. And then we can look at other requests. As the mayor knows, we've been asked by the VA to, you know, possibly provide service out there. That would basically be another fixed route. We are looking at, you know, maybe a minimal service, you know, once or twice a month or three times a month, but we're still looking, working with VA and the fort on funding and how we structure that. You know, the employees out there would like to have bus service out there for morning and afternoon. That's just, that's a whole new program that we have to analyze a little bit closer before we institute something. But that also leads into the conversation with the county. We've had a great need and a number of calls from county residents asking if our bus system goes out to, say, the North Valley. You know, we've looked at park-and-rides, a lot of people in communities like Montana, Wyoming, don't particularly like park-and-rides, they like the autonomy of their vehicles so that if they want to go out for lunch, they can just hop in their car and go out to lunch. Whereas if your car is parked eight miles out in the valley, you're pretty much set with what you have. But those are options, and those are options that we look at our partners, both the county and the state, and the fort, and the VA, to start exploring and see what there's available and what the interest is.
Director Knopki, how much is that annual transfer typically?
I believe it's around $300,000.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Any comments or questions from the commission?
When you say the annual transfer, you mean from the general fund to the Pats? Is that right?
Correct.
Is that what we're calling it? I don't remember what we call it.
Capital T.
Capital T, yeah, whatever we call it these days. Just a couple of little ones. So I noticed the slide said $100,000 for slip, trip, fall hazards. In our binder, it says 225. Is that being proposed for revision?
Yes, after our Monday meeting, we looked at, we probably will ramp up to that 225, but looking at if the budget gets approved in July, trying to bring on that, those staff members for the end of basically this summer and the beginning of next summer, we got to get the program up and running, so we're looking at a little bit of more reduced and, you know, looking at the smaller to medium-sized projects. And as we get this program up and running, you know, that's when we can explore looking at making this crew do larger projects, possibly bringing on some more temps so that we can, you know, basically provide a bigger service to this, to the citizens, but we felt the $100,000 would probably get us through this last half of summer of '21 and the spring of '22.
For the safe routes to schools, is that one also new?
Yes.
And how much of that is expected to go towards like a consulting study outreach?
So Mayor and Commissioners, Commissioner Halliday, that first $200,000 would be to get our study done. Not sure if that's going to be, if it's going to be a $100,000 study, we wanted to put a placeholder in there so that we could have adequate amount of stakeholder meetings and public outreach. Get that study, bring it forward to you before the next budget cycle so that we could get that priority list and put that in the CIP, and then whatever level that we choose to fund, say, safe routes to school, capital projects, that's the level that we start funding year after year after year until that we get these safe routes completed in the city.
Have we done any sort of analysis based on the, you know, we just looked at all of the streets in the city and got $131 or $113 million, something along those lines? Have we looked at, you know, just whatever best practices are around school, schools in general, right? We know Smith School is missing, we know Broadwater School is missing, sidewalks, portions of Jefferson are missing. Have we just looked and tried to isolate down what that would look like in and of itself? The only reason I ask is before we go out and spend $200,000, which we don't even put aside for voluntary sidewalk construction in any given year before we go out and buy a massive study to tell us that we have a massive amount of obligations, and then slowly trickle in until we get to a point where you stand up here and say, "The study we did back in 2022 is now outdated and old, and we recommend you spend another $200,000 in order to figure out your priorities going forward." Do we, do we have a simpler, dirtier method that might get us a little bit of the ways there and still accomplish our product without, you know, going and padding a consultant's pockets for $150,000 bucks?
Mayor and Commissioners, Commissioner Halliday, great question. Part of the reason to hire the consultant is just staff obligations with other projects to basically be able to get that done and, you know, in front of the public and in front of you long before the next budget cycle. But you are correct, we have the ability to go out and look at some of those areas ourselves, identify what those needs are, and, you know, at least get part of the way down that study ourselves. But, you know, the state of Montana still recognizes safe routes to school in a sense. MDT is, you know, they basically, they chose to go a different route, but there is the National Organization for Safe Routes to School, and they have the plans all laid out in a pretty well succinct method, and that's what the study would have been based on, is that national model so that we're not reinventing the wheel, we're following best practices throughout the nation and getting that list of priorities. So yes, we can go out and I'll, we're in the process of looking at, I believe Commissioner Dean requested it for, you know, just say, the emergency snow routes for sidewalks, and, but we can also start analyzing what's around schools and hopefully get that done here in the next, come in this next week, and at least send you an email and let you know what that looks like for, say, a two-block radius around the school or a four-block radius around the school. And then you guys can have those, that information.
Great, yeah, I mean, that would be nice. It just sort of breaks my heart that we study things to death.
radius around the school. And then you guys can have those, that information.
Great. Yeah, I mean, that would be nice. It just sort of breaks my heart that we study things to death with massive amounts of money and then we never actually build anything. With regard to Knight Street, was in your proposal, is it in your presentation, but is Knight actually, Knight's not budgeted in here this year, is it?
The design is, but the construction was, you know, originally anticipated from some COVID savings and we're looking at maybe some of the ARPA funding. That's where we were looking to get Knight Street constructed through, but that, you know, we can also look at other funding options. We, you know, we revised some of the TA grants that we're applying for, which we'll be bringing forward to as either an informational only or a presentation by myself to let you know what we're looking for TA money for with the transportation alternatives through the Montana Department of Transportation. So, there's options, but that's what we are looking at right now.
Do we know what, I remember Knight previously was estimated that somewhere between 750 and 1.2 million. I don't know if you have closer numbers at this point, but do we know what debt servicing for a project like Knight would look like on a year over year?
Mayor and Commissioners, I don't know what the debt servicing would be to say, you know, a $1 million project for Knight would be. I can definitely work with our finance department and see what that would look like. But I believe that we found some efficiencies from the last estimate. We also found some other things that probably needed to be done just to ensure that the crossings were in a lot better condition instead of, you know, rolling, you know, just leaving them as is. So, I think that all came out in a wash, but I think where the last number were closer to the 800 to 900,000. Concrete is expensive and just getting more so as we go on.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, one thing that-
You just thanked me for what?
Well, you know, your patience and your smile. The, the, the Non-Motorized Transportation Advisory Committee had three recommendations at its last meeting. One to look at Helena Avenue, which were recommendations in the five point study, multiple five point studies. Look at the crossing at Ewing and 12th and then look at the Centennial Trail. If the commission was interested in any of those non-motorized projects, actually getting the ball rolling since at least two of those involve our friends at MDT. So, we're looking at like seven years worth of process. What, do you have any numbers for what the commission would budget today for the purposes of getting the engineering ball rolling so that maybe we'll have a crossing for the trail up at Argyle as recommended in that plan sometime in the future?
Mayor and Commissioners, to answer a couple of your questions, Commissioner Halliday, one of the projects that we are recommending for the ARPA money would be paving of the Centennial Trail where it leaves off at Centennial Park through Benton and then Benton through the easement that is, we're just waiting for at this point.
Any day.
Any day, to Henderson. And so, at Henderson, we're also looking at putting at least enhanced crossing. It's not, it's not going to be a bridge, but we're looking at enhanced crossings of a rectangular rapid flash beacon, which would be pedestrian actuated. We would have flashers before the railroad and up on the hill. So, at least there'd be a warning and the people, you know, using the trail system could utilize that enhanced crossing feature. We are looking at TA grants for the Centennial Trail as well. The, you know, some of these projects, you know, unfortunately, they do go through the MDT process and I hope to work with the city manager and the director at MDT to try to, you know, work out a pilot project or something that demonstrates that municipalities have the knowledge to do these projects a little bit faster and a little bit quicker and hopefully cheaper than MDT. We're not taking away from any of their experience. They, they're great engineers and they do their job really well, but sometimes the urban and the highway environment are a bit different. And so, the, for instance, the, the small five point intersection downtown, the consultant has in there 3.5 to $4 million or 4.5 million. You know, we're estimating probably between, we put in 5 million for ARPA funding. That project is a great enhancement and doesn't look, there's some intricacies that, you know, do need to be worked out, but we, it was designed to fit in the existing right of way that we have so that, you know, we wouldn't have to be the property acquisition. We wouldn't have to, you know, go through those negotiations. So, you know, we're hoping for the, you know, five to seven million mark on that. I think that would be a great, I don't want to say a gateway project, but it would be a gateway project to the downtown with the revitalization going on with crews and then other areas of the downtown. You know, if we could get that rolling along with some of these other improvements, I think that that would just be a great amenity to the city. As far as some of these other projects, again, I, you know, hope to work with the director of MDT and the city manager to try to work out maybe a process that we can get some of these projects done a little bit faster due to the needs that are there and, you know, not wanting to wait five or seven years to get a project realized.
With regard to something specifically like, let's say, Centennial Trail, right? There's one specific recommendation for a crossing at Montana Avenue, Argyle Bozeman, sort of L-shaped island crossing or some sort of rapid flashing beacon relationship. There was a long holdoff on doing anything with Centennial for a number of years because we were going to do this study, it was going to assist in getting it across to the Sixth Ward. You know, if, if the commission were interested, still prioritizing Centennial Trail as a, project for this city, it's necessary to get across Montana Avenue and that, that crossing is going to take some time and work. If this commission were dedicated to it this year and saying, let's, let's get that process started, what would the next step be for the purposes of budgeting, consulting, PER? What, what is it we need to do? Can you, can you tell us what that dollar amount is, even if you can't tonight? Could you give us a number so that if, if this body said we want to at least continue to prioritize Centennial Trail, let's put it in the budget so that that process can begin going in 2022?
Yes. Mayor and Commissioners, so that crossing is going to be, you know, challenging in a number of respects because of the nearness of the railroad tracks. I think that we could start down that road, bring on a consultant that is familiar, working with MDT and, and start that preliminary engineering, probably somewhere around $150,000. I will have to, I'm going to just throw that number out there, but please don't hold it to me.
Go through it.
But we could get the, the process started, like you said, we could get the preliminary engineering done, we could get even, you know, 60 to 70% engineering done. It would be just a matter of meeting with MDT, sitting down with them and basically relating to what we want to do and trying to get them on board with, you know, pedestrian refuge island out in the middle of Montana and that location, my gut feel tells me they're not going to be really thrilled about that. They're not going to be thrilled about a bridge going over there either. But we have to do something to get the pedestrians across that, basically that barrier. And we need to work with them to figure out what that is. You know, hopefully we can do something with rectangular rapid flash beacons like we did at Benton. We get really good compliance there at Benton with those pedestrian actuated signals. MDT tends to lean towards, you know, hawks, which are kind of a hybrid thing, but I, I think that it's just a matter of sitting down with them and discussing the projects and just demonstrating the need and the immediacy of some of these projects.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like a fantastic first pilot kumbaya project with MDT.
We'll do our best.
So, if I may also, Mayor and Commission, offer up that the dollars that David, that Director Knopki is citing, there are new additional federal dollars that came out separate from the ARPA dollars that we've been talking about as well. So, we're trying to not only go after projects that we already have in play, but prioritize them strategically across these conversations so that we're hitting things that might be the best examples in moving quickly. I think every state employee has to deal with those wonderful five point intersections and I think the benefit probably show itself. Hopefully, it's a good kumbaya. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for, I know I went over my six minutes, sorry.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Next time, you will be fine.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple of questions, but if I need to push it till later, that's fine too.
Director Knopki, please come back.
He tried to run away.
I tried, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, I, these aren't hard questions, I don't think. So, just a couple of them. Under the other contracted services in relation to snow removal and downtown winter snow operations, contracted plowing, grading, is that all, would that be consistent with what we've have now? Or is this in addition to, you know, trying to address some of these snow removal issues that we keep running up against in terms of sidewalks and driveways and the rest?
Mayor and Commissioners, that's a continuation of what we have now. We've reduced that ask because of what we've seen over the past few years that we've, we've done it. We do have our graders that have our snow gates on them. We piloted, as you know, some, along some emergency snow routes this past year. You know, it worked. We didn't quite hit it right on the head on that one, so we're, we're trying to redo that so that we can do a better job along those routes and maybe try to figure out, you know, how we get farther into the community other than just the emergency snow routes.
Okay, great. And then my other question was on the 11th Avenue mill overlay. Can you talk about that project and what section of 11th it would be?
Mayor and Commissioners, Commissioner Dean, so as you head east on 11th, starting at Cruz there, the initial portion of Cruz isn't bad, but when you get up to the, the top there by Warren, there was an overlay put in a number of years ago that was to mitigate some other issues that the street was having. Well, as anyone that drives that, that's getting a little rough. Obviously, we can't add asphalt to that roadway without doing the ADA ramps. So, our intention is to try to get the ADA ramps basically from Cruz through at least Rodney, upgraded or to Rodney this year and then come through next year with the mill, mill that off and then put a brand new two inch overlay on that to provide that better surface. And then our intent, if, you know, this budget gets approved, is to start working our way across 11th. 11th has been deemed not a good candidate for pavement preservation money from the, from the state. So, in our eyes, we'll just take it, you know, a chunk at a time, we'll find a good stopping point, we'll get the ADA ramps installed, we'll mill it again and do the overlay and, and get that roadway into better shape and then go after pavement preservation money with, say, 6th Avenue like we did back in 13 or 14 with Broadway and Park.
Okay, one more question. And am I correct that once it starts running parallel with Prospect, that's MDT? Is that correct?
That, Mayor and Commissioners, that's correct.
Okay. And I think, Mr. Mayor, for right now, that's all I have.
And that was another question, just explaining that. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Director Knopki. Okay, any final, oh, at this time, we will open the floor for public communications.
Mayor, before, I'm sorry, just to interrupt you one, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Agreed.
If I may, just do a quick summary. One item that I did not share as part of the budget presentation that I wish I had is I did review the citizen, the Helena Citizens Council outreach results and commission strategic plan outcomes. Their priorities is identified and tried to match those up. And I feel like the team and the budget presentations and the options and ideas brought forward are those in alignment with what the HCC had provided. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Holoshok. Okay, the floor is open for public comments. Madam Chair, do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I have no hands raised and I have no written public comment.
And I'm not waiting 45 seconds. Any final comments from the commission, except Commissioner Halliday?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering if in these 45 seconds, Manager Holoshok could explain what the next budget session is going to look like and what-
She'll email you. Come on, man.
I think the public-
Go ahead, Commissioner. I mean, Manager Holoshok.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. I, my hope is in understanding tonight which presentations you would like on Wednesday. That additional date of Wednesday is a special session and it is a request that if you have further questions around this draft preliminary, we have staff come to provide you presentations if you would like. I'm not sure though. Thank you for bringing up the question because I'm not sure if you all would need it. So, I just want to come back around and ask, would you like the next presentation or would you like to wait for the May 26th draft preliminary, which takes into consideration any input and edits that we are recommending to you all or that you've offered up so far?
Mr. Mayor, thanks. I'd be interested in a session in between now and then.
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense. What I was, what I was going to ask as a favor was since the manager proposed sort of a change in some numbers on the COLA, sort of having it backing out some reclassifications. If we could, I don't know if you have a breakdown of that, that we could have for Wednesday to understand or if we're going to be seeing new numbers based on some of the stuff we've heard. I know Commissioner Lockland sent us all an email today specifically with some questions about the golf course, which we talked about a little tonight, some capital improvements and outlay specifying general fund versus enterprise funds. And then had some specific questions about FTEs. So, if we're going to be kind of playing around with those numbers of FTEs, a COLA change and reclasses, it would be helpful to see those numbers since that, that still does appear to be the largest chunk over all of that new year-over-year money, which was like 875,000, even if we're shrinking that now with the COLA number or we're holding off, just understanding what all those individual moving pieces are, which is new staff, which is reclassifications of salaries, which is COLA, I think would help in figuring out what's get, what's getting backed out, what's getting reduced, what's staying in place.
Mr. Mayor, just kind of along those lines, I'd be interested in, from the manager, you know, we've talked a little bit about adjustments that will be made to structurally balance things and, and I guess I'm interested to see what specifically that means and, and how it relates to what we're seeing in the binder here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, I echo both comments from both of the other commissioners. The other, the department presentations that I think would be helpful, similar to tonight's, I think, community development would be helpful and public works. The other piece that, this is not necessarily a high dollar item in the budget, but I think would be helpful for the commission and just the public in general are a review of some of the technology upgrades for the chambers and conference rooms because we are really moving into, you know, a new era of how we, we involve the public and how we can, you know, better serve and that would be helpful to kind of get a review on, on what that looks like.
And I guess this, this is me personally, if you have a little time, because I apologize I missed that meeting, but ITNS budgets always seem to go up at, I'll just say astronomical rates when I look back two years, a year before that, really staggering. And I'm just wondering if maybe I won't force you to do it tonight and I apologize for missing the other meeting, if you could give a nutshell for us at the next meeting of why ITNS costs are going up so much and what we as a city can do about it since we're sort of seem to continually be at the county's mercy.
Thank you. Any final comments from the commission? If not, this meeting is finally adjourned.